Appropriating $787,500 out of Dedicated Drainage and Street Renewal Capital Fund at Valorem Tax as an additional appropriation to professional engineering services contract between City of Houston and Infra Tech Engineers and Innovators LLC. Item 14, set a public hearing date on the proposed amendment of Article 16, Chapter 40 of the city's Code of Ordinances to extend provisions of the civility ordinance to the Riverside Terrace area. Item 15, ordinance authorizing an approving agreement with appropriation between City of Houston and Houston Land Bank. This was delayed by motion 2024-30 on the January 10, '24 agenda. This was item 34. Item 16, motion by Councilmember Castex Tatum, seconded by Councilmember Thomas, to adopt recommendation from Chief Procurement Officer for approval of spending authority in the amount not to exceed $18,873,530.67 for public safety and emergency preparedness, equipment, and supplies. This was tagged by Councilmember Alcorn and was item 12 on the agenda of January 31, 2024. This completes the reading of the agenda for the City Council session of February 6 and 7, 2024. Stay tuned for the next session of Houston City Council scheduled to begin at 9:00 a.m. And in the words of the City Secretary, Pat Jefferson Daniels, always treat everyone the way you would like to be treated. Thank you and have a blessed and fantabulous day.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary.
Thank you, my now number one fan.
First, I'd say we're going to delay the public hearing until the end of the agenda. So we'll have adequate time to have a good hearing. First, I guess this morning is the mayor's report on the Fifth Ward Cancer Cluster. A little background, I think it was January 10th, where I had asked for 30 days to review the proposal. There was some healthy discussion, but I thank you for allowing me to have those 30 days. A little background in my decision making was I was sworn in on December 31st. Guess we were all sworn in officially and public on the 2nd. The next week, the day before the first council meeting, I was briefed by Gloria Moreno and Steve Costello, who had been assigned this project, and they were describing the challenges I had observed from a distance. This serious matter, certainly as a state senator, it's gotten a lot of discussion in the press, but was not familiar with the action of the city. In that briefing, I was shown what was passed in December in the closing days of the previous administration by this council and the mayor of $5 million to relocate residents that chose, that were volunteering to be relocated. I was told in that briefing that 10 families had agreed to be, and I've learned that that was as of last summer. 10 families, one family had already relocated and two families had immigration issues that were renters. $10,000 if a renter wanted to relocate, and with the assistance of the land bank, the land trust, up to $250,000 on a new home if they chose to relocate. I was asked questions. There were not good answers, and one question and answer would lead to another, so I ask y'all for more time. I appreciate it. I hope y'all appreciate the transparency that this experience gives us. I'm not looking for a shout out, but I do want to let you know this is the way it'll be done as long as I'm mayor. You have to, council members, participate in the plans, the transparency, and have as much input and knowledge of a project as the administration has. To see for myself, I took two Saturdays ago Cynthia Wilson, a special advisor to the mayor of Diane Patronno, to Fifth Ward. I'd actually been in Acres Home that morning for a funeral. Took time in the community that morning in Acres Home. Then we, I put my jeans on and went driving myself in Fifth Ward, and the first thing I noticed was the redevelopment. It's striking to see the improvements that the city's providing at a time that we're trying to relocate individuals. Overlays of most of the streets, metro improving bus locations, really a redevelopment of this area sitting on top of the cancer cluster. I was shocked because I was driving, I was flagged down at a couple of stop signs by residents that said, they didn't want to move. They thought it was a land play or gentrification largely by developers. I could see where they would draw that conclusion. New homes, condos in an area that the city was emphasizing a relocation. Depending on who you talk to in the neighborhood, there was different levels of concern about the cancer cluster. So we told them we would do our due diligence, stay in touch with them. I want to applaud Councilmember Jackson for having a town hall meeting. I think we can all say there was a lot of confusion there because of different levels of government taking action. Obviously, Dr. Plumer, Councilmember Plumer, is certainly headed up research, medical advice, all the way to Washington, and I could give you a long list of people that I've been in contact with. Obviously, I just mentioned community residents. The county attorney was in my office two days ago discussing his lawsuit, which is on hold until the EPA does its final research. The EPA Regional Director, Dr. Nance, and I were in conversation Friday. The GLO, shockingly, already has built three homes in the cancer cluster and has 18 planned, 18 that have been permitted. We've encouraged and they've agreed to put a pause on that. We've visited with the Union Pacific folks. They know, I believe, if a causation is determined, they should be responsible and come forward with a plan to clean up their causation cancer cluster. The family Houston is prepared to assist us in relocation and facilitate that. The land bank, the land trusts. I could go on all the stakeholders, but the challenge is going to be to have one collaborative effort to go to the community with. And it's going to be difficult because Union Pacific is doing a study. The EPA says theirs might take still up to 18 months, but I don't think the city can wait. I will emphasize, I do not believe the city can own this by themselves. It's much too massive an undertaking, and there should be, as is the county, involved, the state, the federal government, Union Pacific, and all of the different institutions that we've brought to the table. So in conclusion, and I'm actually going, because I just think information is power. I know it is. I'm going to ask Stephen, David, Cynthia, if y'all will show the redevelopment in this area, which we've asked the city not to issue any permits. The last city permit was in January, folks. The city voted in December with a relocation plan placing $5 million in the relocation. At the same time, they were redeveloping the area and issuing permits. The last one, Mayor Protem Castex Tatum, was in January. They've been issuing permits up to 88 since '23. So this ain't the way to do things, the way we inherited it come January. And I hope this can become a model of consensus building, collaboration around this horseshoe. We've got some excellent, experienced council members around this shoe that want to do the right thing, and if we come together with the information, certainly we will. Councilmember Thomas, through all my work, I kept thinking about your comment when we were about to vote, is perception is so important. I totally agree, and that's the reason I think when we get through this, we're going to vote it out and have 2 million of the five dedicated to facilitate with the land bank and Houston families to work with these families to relocate them. So I hope maybe there's an example of how not to do something, and then maybe how we've learned and we can go forward and do it right and regain the confidence of the people. Stephen, if y'all will, go ahead and just demonstrate where the redevelopment is taking place relative to sitting right on top of the cancer cluster.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor, and good morning, council members. One of the efforts that we wanted to make during this one month period was to be able to understand multiple jurisdictions, multiple community partners, and the ways with which they are all coordinating in that community. And more importantly, to learn from the perspective of the community members to understand what they are seeing looking out and what we learned from them and what I'm going to show you on this map, that there are a lot of different-
Speak up a little.
There are a lot of different people saying a lot of different things, and the most important thing that we thought was to put everything on a map so you can see how much work is being done and why it is that important to have a unified voice. So the first thing that I'm going to show you is, I'm going to orient you to the map. The pink zone or purple zone is what we're calling, colloquially is called the creosote cluster or the creosote plume. That is Zone 1, according to the Health Department, if you've heard from them as well. Zones 2 and Zones 3, which are the blue and the green zone respectively, are what we are considering the dioxin plume. What has happened with previous briefings has sort of elaborated the point of the chemicals that are out there. Suffice it to say, I think y'all understand that these are all dangerous. So what we wanted to be able to understand is what testing is being done. We know that the EPA through UP is doing testing, City of Houston has done testing, the GLO is doing testing, and so there's a bunch of sites out there that are representative of what has been tested. And so what I'm going to bring up are all of the sites that have received testing recently. And as you can see, there's a lot of work going on in that community. These are various ways in which holes are being drilled into the ground, looking for vapor, there are soil samples being tested. We've actually gone inside homes and taken dust samples to test for dioxin to see if there's a carcinogen within people's homes. So from the medical perspective, there has been a ton of testing being done. What we also wanted to be able to show was that there is also a ton of city work, which is creating cognitive dissonance to the community. What we heard, and Mayor Whitmire put this very succinctly, is that from the community's perspective, they feel like this is a land grab. They feel like we are doing a bunch of things in the community, improving that community, and saying at the same time, it's a cancer cluster, you've been exposed to cancer, we need to relocate you. And so when we began to pull all of this information into a map, it became quite stark. And what we saw, we wanted to start with what active permits are out there, and these are the permits that you've submitted for that permit. It is going through the process, but it has not been yet declined or issued. It's still in that pipeline. We saw that there are 71 active permits, and if you look, there are five parcels within the creosote plume, this is the most dangerous area, that have five parcels that have active permits. And what we were able to do was we were able to sort of pull in, here, I'll go to this one real quick. This permit in particular is a, is a single-family resident with a tax garage, and it was pulled October 2nd of 2023. From a community's perspective, we started speaking to them about the cancer plume in January of 2019. And between January of 2019 and December of 2023, we saw quite a bit of activity within that community. And so this is an active permit. What we wanted to be able to also bring up and understand is what permits have been issued, have gone through that process and have been accepted as that, not declined but issued. We saw that there were 88 single-family residential permits that have been issued within that community as well. And so these are single-family homes, but as you know, it's not always-
Stephen, slow down.
Oh, sorry.
City permits.
City permits.
88 have been granted.
For single-family residences, yes, sir.
Since when?
Between 2019 and December of 2023.
Okay. Multiservice, multifamily. And feel free to ask questions.
Yeah, new or remodeled? New houses or-
New homes.
So these are new, these are new homes? And I'll-
And then the multifamilies-
Yes, sir. There are 17 multifamily permits that were issued for multifamily structures as well.
And even before you did that, I saw a graph that showed where the city had overlaid the streets, which-
I will throw that up as well.
You're going to get that, you're going to do that in a moment?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Because the new permits, the new construction, plus the improvements in the infrastructure is what really is leading to cynicism by the public.
Yes, sir. And one of the things that we wanted-
Slow down. Mayor Protem Cast-
Before you move forward, I want to be clear about the single-family permits. You're saying there's 88. I'm looking at the map. So are we talking about in the pink area where we are specifically looking at the $5 million and what we are targeted on? Are we looking at the blue and the green? So are those 88 permits in the pink area?
So those are 88 permits within the zones that were defined as the cancer cluster from the city's perspective. So that is the pink, the blue, and the green.
Okay, but the pink area is where we are discussing the-
Relocation.
-creosote and the trouble.
That is correct.
That's our identified area. What's the permitting in that pink area?
In the pink area, we see five active parcels with permits, excuse me, five parcels with active permits, and we saw two structures that were new builds. And those are single-family structures.
And of course, Dr. Nance and others would tell you the cluster could and is moving.
Absolutely.
Is why we would go ahead and include. In fact, describe the other colors on your graph.
Yes, sir.
As councilmembers said, the area we're trying to relocate folks from is the pink. What's the significance of the blue and the green?
The blue and the green are areas where there is suspected dioxin. And to that point, we have begun testing within, the City of Houston did testing on sites, and I will pull those up there more on the east side, excuse me, the west side of this area. But what we have seen, those dots that you're seeing, if they are orange, they are below the toxicity threshold, and if they are red, they are above. So we are finding dioxin within the community. And with dioxin comes the requirement of remediation. Now, in the conversations that we had with EPA, what they said is that these are, we're glad that you did these testing. They are references for us. We are still going to do our own testing. And what they've committed to us was that hopefully within the next six to nine months, they'll be able to say affirmatively where and where not they believe that these sites are toxic. Until that point, what we wanted to be able to understand is-
Excuse me, Stephen.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Ramirez, who, when I was given shout outs and thank you, I go, you and I are on your own as well, and I applaud that.
Thank you, Mayor. Stephen, what's the difference between Zones 2 and Zones 3?
So it was a designation done by the Health Department previously, and it was about the expectation of where we would find dioxin. And to be clear, there is an expectation, there is a study being done by the EPA in concurrence with the soil testing, that they're also going to be doing a flood testing. So what we know is that there was a significant presence of dioxin within the UPRR site. During Hurricane Harvey, soil got lifted because of the flooding and moved and dispersed out into the community. And so the expectation is that the further away from the UPRR site, the less instance of dioxin we're going to see. Now, this is not me speaking as a medical expert because I am absolutely not. This has been us aggregating information from the Health Department as well as from other organizations. So if you have a specific question about that, I'm absolutely happy to go find that answer for you.
And just to follow up, we've been talking about creosote and dioxin, but are there other chemicals associated with this operation that could also cause higher rates of disease?
There very well could be. And so creosote is a slurry, and it's a mixture of chemicals. And so what we have heard is that the vapor testing and the soil testing is not testing for one or two chemicals. They are testing for 500 with each soil plug that they pull, with each vapor test that they do. So when we get results back from the EPA over the next, let's just call it a year in a worst-case scenario, if, when they come back, we're going to be seeing a full profile of what was tested. What we tested for at the City of Houston was for dioxin, which is a very important thing to test for. But we, the expectation of the EPA is that they are going to get a full profile of the, of this particular community. And a, I think a point of distinction in Councilmember Ramirez, this is, I think, a great question, is that they're not just doing testing within this distinct community, they are actually zooming out, and they are going to be doing within the footprint of the corridor of, south of 610, east of the East Tex Freeway, and a little bit north of I-10. They're taking 22 samples across that community to look for a baseline understanding of those chemicals as well. And so that is why it's exceptionally important to make sure that we factor in what the EPA is doing and what testing they're going to be providing to us, testing results. So going back into this, I'll turn off the, I'll turn off the dioxin testing. So to your, to your question, Mayor Protem, there are 88 single-family resident, residential permits within the larger community, within the blue, the pink, and the green. Within the pink, we are seeing, within the pink area, which is the creosote plume, we are seeing, we saw two structures. And one of the things that we really tried to emphasize is the trust but verify model. Sometimes we get it wrong on the permitting, and so we actually added a component to this where we were allowed, we gave ourselves the ability to go to a street view on Google Maps. And so what we can see is, sure enough, there is a structure going in. Now, what's really important and distinctive here, and this is where sometimes permitting doesn't always get it right, they applied for a single-family permit, but if y'all can see, this is clearly a duplex. There are two front doors. And so what, this is a really important decision that we are counting one single-family resident. There are two families living there, and so it adds to the potential cost of being able to ameliorate this concern with the commitments that were made of the previous administration. And so with those, what we decided to also look for was the multifamily building permits issued within this community. And we saw that there are, there were three multifamily structures. Now, what's really important here is that that same parcel I just showed you where there's a single-family permit that was issued, there is also a multifamily permit that was issued. So at some point, what the question that we have is, is there going to be an additional permit? There's a very large lot here. Are we going to see two more structures go up? There's a, there's a lot of questions that we have to the point, there's a lot to learn about this process. And then finally, and this is me belaboring the point that Mayor Whitmire brought up earlier, we wanted to understand both the road overlays, and we saw 8.6 lane miles of overlay created within this community, and I will pull that up right now. So the blue lines are effectively the overlays that have occurred, and so we see within the creosote plume, fully new roads. And then they extend further out into the dioxin areas. And then we also wanted to understand, one of the things that Cynthia and Diana and Mayor Whitmire, when they were out in the community, saw was that there were brand-new metro bus stops being built, rebuilt. They are not new stops for the line, but they are completely rebuilding the structure itself. And so we were also able to bring those in, we were also able to bring those in. And what we see is, within the community, they saw three brand-new bus stop rebuilds. And the perspective that we had, I mean, as we were beginning to formulate our own set of questions and be able to understand the perspective of the residents, if you look at this, removing the cancer cluster from underneath it, this neighborhood has seen significant rebuild. It's a wonderful thing. We like to see these in our communities, but the fact of the matter is, in 2019, we said that the land is killing you to these folks, and-
Hold off, Stephen.
Sir.
Councilmember Carter.
Just, sorry, you may have answered this. I'm just in awe of your information here. On the cancer plume itself, so in 2019, the city goes out and says, the house is on fire. We've got an issue, and we need to see about relocating. And then we immediately start permitting, and what year, for instance, the multifamily, which is really, was permitted as a single-family residence, really multi, what's the certificate of occupancy on that? Do you have a date?
I do. This is where, I love my map. So what we saw is that the single-family residence with attached was issued on August 8th of 2023.
2023?
Yes, last year, last August.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Martinez.
Thank you, Mayor. And I think what kind of stands out to me is these mill overlays. There's certain projects that allow for this type of construction to happen. Can you let us know if it was part of the Mayor's Street Rehabilitation Initiative, or was it a, you know, how did these actual infrastructure projects happen?
So it's, what we know is that this particular footprint, so I can zoom out a little bit, what we know is that this particular footprint was within Mayor Turner's, the previous administration's Complete Communities Program. So I can assume that that would, it fell within those sort of set of priorities. And this is again, one of the things that we were attempting to do was just learn, right? The expectation here wasn't to make a decision or make a choice but to learn. And what we heard from the community is, we heard, we don't trust you, and here's the reasons why. And this map, I think very succinctly shows that we were talking, charitably, we were not communicating with ourselves.
And just to follow up on that, in, within that Complete Community, what other streets have been rehabbed or-
So we've overlaid what was in a buffer of this footprint. I can absolutely create a map where we layer that in. But again, 8.6 lane miles within this particular area.
You're just about to overload us with information. Ms. Wilson, you were with me. Your background in education and running major institutions, you want to shed any light on the comments to the public we visited with? They were, they were kind of dismayed and looking for someone to answer their questions because they truly believe, a half a dozen or so I spoke to truly believe that they were being taken advantage of with the developers. There's, there's signs for custom homes on the lots, and I guess you got to see my shock when I saw the improvements being made because I'd spent my morning in Acres Home, and it was, the Fifth Ward Cluster Zone looked like a economic development, pretty prosperous, I don't want to use the word prosperous. They have challenges, certainly illegal dumping was present, stray dogs were present, quality of life issues. But in terms of the infrastructure, people believe churches, a pastor we talked to, there's actually an active motel in the area. Anyway, I'll yield to you to just express the sentiment of the public that you and I had contact with.
Yes, sir. We spoke with several people in the community, and it varied in terms of their understanding of the creosote plume, of where they lived, what they'd been offered. I think there were families who had members who lived in the creosote plume, and they had experienced some of the cancer deaths in their families, but there were all, but even those people were confused about the message that was being given. They felt that, yes, there is something wrong. Yes, I have had this horrible experience in my family, but the city is building, actively building new homes right next door to someone who may have passed away. It's a lot of confusion, a lack of trust that was a result of this confusion. And what you see in the community is a vibrant community. They did not look like they were running from these toxic wastes that's in their, the land, in the land that they live on, and they were basically confused. You would hear them speak to, yes, I know this is what's happening in my community. Yes, I know this is prevalent. Yes, I know it's in the dirt that I, that I, that surrounds me, but there are new buildings right next door and down the street, and there are new roads, and there is so much improvement, I just don't understand. And for me, it sounds like someone wants to take my land, clean it up, and then redevelop it.
Thank you. Any questions, members? If not, I've got a recommendation. One, I think it needs to be cleaned up. We can certainly look for families and support them that want to voluntarily move. I think we need to halt additional development in the area. When I talked to Dr. Nance with EPA, she was much more encouraged that Union Pacific would participate in the cost than I had been led to believe. So obviously, I think that's critical. They have to assist the cleanup of the mess that they created. We've been in contact with them, but the EPA is certainly diligently seeing that if they're the cause, they will fund the cleanup. So I think our proposal that was passed in December, the $5 million, which we held up a month ago, $2 million of that to contract with Land Bank, Houston Families, that money will be set aside, although I think we also have to keep in mind the fiscal responsibility to all Houstonians that were using their money wisely. If you only had a half a dozen families, that would be a pretty expensive proposition. Now, it does emphasize how serious we take this, and I think the vote today, which I'm going to recommend, is a statement that the City of Houston is committed to Fifth Ward, addressing the cancer cluster issue. addressing the cancer cluster issue, environmental equality, and to continue to work with all the levels of government and the private sector to make this a successful effort. I want to give a shout out to Steve Williams, Director of the Health Department, who I've met with several times, very passionate, very passionate about getting this completed. And we'll stay in contact with him. Against, again, Councilmember Plummer, thank you. Councilmember Jackson, your district. I know we have to continue to maintain the community while we're discussing relocation, but I do think being in the complete communities, being included in that complete communities, they're getting improvements in overlay and bus stops that have led to part of the confusion. And Councilmember Ramirez, for you to go out about your second week on the job, speaks volumes about your commitment. And as I look around this horseshoe, I know all of us share the concern. It's something that has to be done right, and I hope this model of bringing us together to be successful and with transparency and information will go a long ways. With that said, I recognize Councilmember Kayman.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning. I had several questions for our city attorney, if I may.
Sure.
You know, we're talking about stopping or putting a hold on permitting, which I believe is absolutely necessary in this case. And I first, Mayor, thank you for this presentation. Thank you all for your diligence in how you're communicating this data and this information and laying it out for us. And we have a great packet as well that lays out even more details. City Attorney, what legal authority does the city have to actually hold permits? So for example, we've had instances in different districts where the community hasn't want something built, and because of state law, we have to issue those permits. Even when it comes to flooding, which is another concern. Now, this is, of course, another level where literally people are dying. So my first question is, what's the legal authority we fall back on to actually hold these permits?
The bar you're referring to is the vested rights statutes in the local government code. However, in this instance, I believe because of the testing and the documented concern we have, the pause to which the mayor refers means we're going to take a close look at anyone pushing an application for a permit, and we would reach out to the EPA because EPA has broad remedial powers that would probably trump state law in this instance. So when we refer to a pause, that's what we're talking about, but it's based on the extent of the documentation to date, and that's going to be continuing.
So what you're saying, and I'm glad you brought up the EPA, that previously, because certain steps weren't there, it didn't necessarily meet the threshold for our ability to put that pause, but now we're here and we can start doing that. Is that correct?
That's my opinion.
Okay, thank you. And then, related to the EPA, Mayor, it's my understanding that the city, the county, and nonprofits have sent up a notice to the EPA for notice of intent to sue Union Pacific under the Federal Resource Conservation Recovery Act. That law then gives the EPA the authority to take that over. My understanding, but I want to confirm, City Attorney, that precludes the city or the county itself from taking further action litigation-wise. It's EPA that's now taking that over, but it does not preclude individual residents from seeking through the courts civil remedies. Is that correct?
That's right. It's the, the Resource Recovery and Restoration Act that we're operating under has a key TAM provision, which allows a private party to step in the shoes of the government. If the government steps in, that private party has to step out, but the residents would have a separate, a different cause of action, not under that statute.
Okay. And the EPA, it's my understanding, we're talking a lot about testing, and I heard you, Stephen, say that the, excuse me, Deputy Chief, that the city was going to continue testing. It's my understanding, because of the EPA's involvement, that the EPA has assumed oversight of testing and that they are the ones that will be overseeing UP's testing. And even with that testing, right, we don't necessarily want UP independently testing and just sending results, but EPA has the ability to do some of their testing on their own. Does that mean that the city is going to fall under that, or are we still doing our own independent testing?
So the City of Houston conducted that testing last year, or two years ago, and I'm referring to the dioxin soil testing, as well as the dust wipes that have occurred. You are correct. What we are waiting for is the EPA to conduct, to finalize the testing that they are doing under UP's, or UP is doing under the EPA supervision, which that testing is occurring under the Superfund Authority as authorized through the TCEQ. And so the expectation, right now, what they're working on is getting access to the sites to do that testing. They need roughly, what they're referring to as their sample size is going to be roughly 350 parcels. They have access to about 149, meaning there's still a lot of distrust. There are residents that say, I don't want you on my land. And so that is going to be an effort that needs to be taken care of. The faster that the, those residents can get that access, the quicker that the testing can be completed, which is why when the EPA finalizes those results, is still an unknown.
Great, and I appreciate you saying that because for me, right, we're hearing a lot of the distrust in the community, Mayor, and I'm going to defer to our district council members and our at-large council members, and of course, your administration, and how we get that trust, because I'm, what you're saying is, we have to, we can't just go on to someone's property, right? Here in Texas, we believe in property rights, and, but we need them to allow EPA and UP to come on their land to take that testing. So how do we build that trust and make sure that we are getting those samples? Because it can take beyond a year. I'm, I'm being told 12 to 18 months to complete the testing at this point through the EPA process. So whatever we can do, Mayor, I stand in full support of how we build that trust to get those permissions, to do that testing, and the importance of all levels of government working together on this. I think that is absolutely critical. I did see the list in here of who we have been working with. So I do want to just recognize and thank all of the partners for coming together. I didn't see, in terms of who our partners are, the county listed on here. I do want to thank, though, and I'm sure this was just an oversight, I know that County Attorney Menefee has been very, very involved in this and vocal and active in working with the city.
He was in our office Friday, and it's on my closing remarks to thank him. He's been very proactive. His lawsuit is, is on hold pending the EPA findings. So you did mention that residents could take civil action on. There are trial lawyers that are in the community, and that could be also part of the confusion.
Thank you, Mayor.
But what we can do, as you said, speak with one voice, keep everybody at the table, including Union Pacific, and for certain, the families. But I think if the administration and council all reiterate how committed we are, we're making this vote today to, to make a statement, part of the work of networking could be conducted by certainly the Family Houston, which we'll fund in a moment, and the Land Bank. So we're, I think we're on the right track, and, and I think we all still have a huge responsibility. I still think cleaning up the area will be the ultimate solution.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor.
And so did Dr. Nance with the EPA. Thank you. Councilmember Ramirez? I apologize, Thomas was hit. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Mayor. How apropos that this is Black History Month and we're talking about this, so I'm going to put on my faculty hat and just give some history around mistrust. So the mistrust between government and Black folks did not start with the previous administration or the administration with that. We can point to Special Order 15, William T. Sherman, with the authorization of the 40 acres and the loaned mule, right? That was supposed to then offer free slaves land, and the Freedmen's Bureau retracted on that. That special order was then rescinded, and so there is a history of mistrust with Black Americans and land ownership. But I also ask my students this question. How much does a city need to invest in a neighborhood before they hit the tipping point and it starts to revitalize? So we have to marry the two of investing in a neighborhood that for decades has been divested. And then I also want to tease out, once we get to the public hearing for housing, there's an incentive for developers to come in for multifamily when there's external development happening. That's a part of their point system. So I think as we navigate through this, council member and Mayor Whitmire, we have to make sure that those two marry. I don't think that this administration, or this year, or the next five or eight years, will really bridge the gap in terms of mistrust. We have to be rigorous and diligent and consistent because there's a history. It's documented. We know what it looks like. The only other alternative would have been eminent domain, and if we would have eminent domain, these Black people's land, right, the city would have split in fours. So this is a very sensitive topic, and so I appreciate the one voice, the one sound, the one band, because we have to do that. And I appreciate all of the efforts in the community because people, some people are dependent on this. Some people want to stay because they finally see the improvements, they finally get the overlay, they finally get the bus stop, they finally get the access, they see the new construction, and they're saying, yes, finally, right? They're finally getting the rebuild, rebuild. So as we move through this, I'm glad this is coming to a vote, I just wanted to paint the picture that it didn't start yesterday, right? And what's happening in District B is also happening in District F in Piney Point, and it's also happening in other neighborhoods. And so hopefully, there's a model on how we treat relocation and how we invest in neighborhoods at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I know the administration has put a pause on permitting, and by the way, thank you for that, doing that 11 days into your administration, when really, it should have been done a long time ago. But I'm curious, how long can we have a pause on permitting? Can it be indefinite, or do we have to take further action to prohibit future permitting in this area if we think it's appropriate?
There are certain steps that can be taken. It's still being evaluated as to whether to proceed with a moratorium or not, but I think this pause is somewhat unique because it's based on the power of EPA and the contaminants there. So I think how long we can do it is a little fluid right now, but we're looking at various other options.
Okay. And my last comment, Mayor, would be in, with regard to Union Pacific. I've mentioned Union Pacific a couple of times in my remarks recently, and I just want to say that they met with myself and my staff last week. I appreciate that very much, two representatives from Union Pacific. I understand the matter is in litigation. They're being sued, so quite surprising they were willing to visit with us, but again, I appreciate that and hope that going forward, they will play a financial role in this to help us out. So thank you for that.
Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. Thank you, Mayor, for just, you know, creating a pathway forward. You know, we've been dealing with this for quite some time, a couple of decades, you know, folks have been dealing with the cancer cluster, and so I'm happy that we finally got a pathway forward. Thank you for taking my suggestions on, you know, making sure that every resident in the area have a comprehensive financial and physical assessment, which is needed, and of course, bringing in more partners, which is needed as well. So I'm just excited that we're moving forward and taking care of the residents in 5th Ward and Cashmere Garden. So thank you.
Appreciate you.
Mayor Protem.
Mayor Protem Katsikstatham?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm happy to have all of this comprehensive information, but I think what we need to really look at as we are discussing the path forward is, if residents are concerned about this being a land grab, there's distrust, there is a history, as, as Councilmember Thomas so eloquently pointed out, of the distrust of African-Americans and land ownership. I think what I would like to know is, if I am a property owner and I decide that I want to move during this voluntary program, is there going to be a covenant on my property that we're saying is unlikely that the Creosote Plume can be remediated in this lifetime? Is there going to be a covenant on my property now that no other person can come and grab that land and build a duplex? Because similar to what we do with flooding, when there is a buyout, there is a covenant placed on that land so that another home cannot be put on that property. We're saying here that the Creosote Plume will probably not be remediated in this lifetime. If I take a buyout, will there be a covenant on my land so that even though there's new bus stops, new street overlays, and other things for people that may be around the plume, or that travel through the plume to access, will there be a covenant on my property that I moved away from voluntarily that does not benefit someone else and put another family in danger?
I think that is an outstanding unanswered question. That is one of the things that Mayor Whitmire brought up when we first spoke about this. And I mean, to, to that point of speaking with the community and speaking with all of the stakeholders that we have, we, it was made exceptionally clear, their land is their legacy. And being able to respect that and treat that with the respect and dignity that they deserve and have earned is something that is an exceptionally important thing to do. And to begin to answer that question, and this is to Mayor Whitmire's point about Family Houston, we need to, to stop broad-brush stroking this community and saying, this is what they are, this is what they have, this is what they don't have, and gain that individual household needs assessment, be able to understand, are, do they have credit worthiness? Do they have a bank account? What health condition are they in? Have they been screened for cancer recently, living in a cancer plume? And we can't answer those questions. And to begin to answer those questions, all of the ones, especially the one that you brought, which is an exceptionally complicated one, we have to be able to answer the basics, the fundamentals. And so the path forward while we wait for the EPA is to engage with those agency, or engage with those community members, but not as a single agency on an island, but as a collective group of people who are concerned. I don't think that we've viewed any lack of passion or concern about this community among the stakeholders who've engaged. I think what we've witnessed is a lack of coordination.
Right. And, and I do, with that, with that answer to the question, want to say that I am happy that we have this $5 million, we've allocated this $5 million, we voted for this $5 million, and we'll move forward with the $2 million for the administration and the building and moving forward, because for so long, the people have cried out to government to hear us about this cancer cluster. And we did something that has led to something bigger. And so I do not want to belittle what we've done in any way, because but for that first step, we wouldn't be able to move forward with a bigger solution. And I'd say it all the time, we can always improve on our best, but we're listening to the people in 5th Ward. We are honoring the people that have died of cancer. We all agree that there is an issue, and the way we move forward now will be a, a legacy for all of us because we are listening to the people, and we've all vowed to listen to the people and hear their cries, and we're making something happen. So what's important to me is that if a family decides to move, that we do not allow their property to become available to another family to suffer the same concerns that, that they would have. So while we are making our plans, it is my hope that we will answer the question of what happens to the land if I take the voluntary buyout.
Absolutely. Councilmember Plummer?
Thank you so much, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. Really, really well done. I have a couple of questions, and maybe this goes to the city attorney, Mayor Whitmire, if that's okay. Because we're not sure how long legally we can have a pause, what are the, what are the requirements for a realtor that is selling property in terms of some level of disclosure to the buyer? Are you aware, is there anything?
I don't believe that there's any requirement under state law. I'm not sure that we could impose it ourselves, although we can distribute information about what the city is doing and the dangers that we know of.
Okay, thank you. The other question is, as we know, in the City of Houston, dioxin is a byproduct of industrial processes. And so because Houston has so many industrial areas, we'll find dioxin in a lot of places in the City of Houston. It's almost like a natural contaminant that we see. So I want to make sure that we are fully, you know, transparent to our community, is let them know what are, what are average levels of dioxin, and then what are toxic levels of dioxin. I think that's something that we have to make sure. We say that word, and everyone just completely freaks out. And so I want to make sure that we're clear on that piece as well. So in that communication... So in that communication with our residents, you know, I think that we need to let them know that as well. There are multiple law firms that are engaged in this process, and those law firms, I'm not going to name them, although I would like to, they are instructing the residents not to allow testing on their property. And so I think it's really important to, I think that we've talked before, family Houston is going to kind of lead this, which I think is brilliant to have one voice in this conversation. But I would ask that family Houston engage with all the law firms that have some type of involvement with their clients to allow EPA to go in and fully test these properties. And my last comment is kind of going back a little bit to what Vice Mayor, I mean, Mayor Protim mentioned. In addition to what she's saying, I would like to also put in some first right of refusal. So everything that we're talking about right now hinges on the EPA's results. If the EPA comes back and says, this is toxic property, this is truly a cancer cluster, everyone is ill, then we make our decision, and we hit go. If we find out, if for some reason, we find out there's not a current exposure, I would very eloquently beg that these folks get their property back. Even if they don't want to live there, that they have first rights of refusal before anyone gets to come get it again. This is our legacy. This is what black people, this is the only thing we have. We don't have 401Ks, we don't have big, deep pockets, we don't have lots of, you know, savings accounts. We have our land. And regardless of what they choose to do with that land later, I think it's really imperative to make sure that that family, and this is Big Mama's house, right, that family gets their land back so they can do whatever the heck they want to do with it afterwards. And so I know there's a lot of points, but I wanted to make sure I brought those up, and we need to make sure that they're protected in every way possible. Yeah. Thank you.
Very good points, and that's reading. I believe the cleanup is probably more important ultimately than a relocation, because people are going to be very reluctant for all the reasons we've stated, certainly be able to maintain their equity even if they've relocated. So. Councilmember Huffman?
Thank you, Mayor. When these 71 permits were issued since 2019, was the city required to advise the people pulling the permits that testing was in progress? Or even if it wasn't required, did the city advise that testing was in progress?
I don't believe that the city did.
Councilmember Castillo?
Thank you, Mayor, and Stephen, for the presentation and the information. You mentioned additional testing, and you mentioned also plume movement. Are there any plans for either the city or Union Pacific to do additional testing east of Zone 3, you know, more towards the Denver Harbor area, right next to Zone 3, where they, you know, the community has expressed concerns about their proximity to the cluster and, you know, seeing rates of cancer?
That's a great question. What I know is that the EPA, I think that there's a more detailed response that I can get you from those groups, but I can tell you that the EPA has required UP to do background testing in the broader community, which will include going into Denver Harbor and doing soil samples. They've already got site access because the properties that they are going on are city of Houston-owned and Harris County-owned properties. So they are going to do those, that background testing anyways. The important thing to note is that there is a big difference between the creosote plume monitoring, and then vapor testing, and then soil testing. So the plume monitoring has been going on for the greater part of a decade, and they drilled 360-ish water wells throughout this community, and they have been going down at various depths, 10 feet, 0 to 5 feet, 10 feet, 20, 30 feet, and they have been monitoring where the creosote has been going. And what we have heard was that generally, they believe that the creosote plume has stopped growing outward. I think I would like to hear a more detailed explanation of that, and I think it would most likely come, and we've asked that the EPA address it when they are done with all of their testing so we can get a comprehensive reporting out. With regard to the vapor testing and the soil testing, that is ongoing right now. The site access is an issue. People are very skeptical of letting UP or whatever company UP has hired onto their property to test. And that is, again, that sort of single voice and wrapping around our arms around that community to get that, at least enough trust, to let them on their property for that testing, because that is going to be the most important next step, is EPA to tell us yes or no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Dr. Nance, EPA Director, mentioned Denver Harbor being a concern. So they'll go across in the Denver Harbor. Pastor Davis, councilmember.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me, I just wanted to make some points and then ask this question. As I attended the meeting that was brought together by Councilmember Jackson with bringing the panel together, which included the Health Department, EPA, and the attorney, county attorney. And from that perspective, you know, I said in our last meeting a month ago when this was postponed for 30 days, that this is a crucial and critical situation. And I would hope that the collaboration around the table here, as many of us in the city have heard about this problem. In any other place, this would have been a national issue that would have been discussed on the basis of what's happened to this community. I believe all of the people here are great, smart, intelligent, and Mayor, I want to commend you for, first, the pausing, because I think it's pretty relevant that we can hear that that was a point where that was the cart put in front of the horse in relation to this matter. And you cannot put a Band-Aid on a shotgun wound. There are a lot of moving parts. I've heard from a lot today, people talking, and specifically, and very important, oh, by the way, maybe communities have viewed, I heard when it was said that, you know, when it comes to the black community, they feel distrust in the government. Well, again, I want to, I don't want to play it down, but I don't think we ought to overlook the fact. The action that you've taken, Mayor, is great because of the significance of this situation, even the permitting of property. So what I like to see is if this hole is going to be done. Because see, personally, I believe that the process should have taken a very aggressive approach from the start. Once this was recognized of the conditions, I met with UP. They purchased, they, UP purchased Southern Pacific back in 1996, and they purchased the contamination. It went along with the purchase. So this is a long, ongoing thing. And I also brought up the question at the meeting that we were there, though, some of the councilmen was there. I asked EPA, how long is this testing process is going to take place, and when are we going to start getting the results back? And the answer was, we're going to wait for UP. Their testing is being done because we don't want everybody in there at the same time. But now, that's a concern of mine, because in most cases, we generally know EPA takes the lead on any contamination perspective. So I don't really know exactly where that's going, but I would say, they explained to me, UP explained, that they went down in one area of that contaminated area, and they built brick walls in order to stop the movement of the creosote, right? So, again, I think that absence of a lot of information that we've got to rely on, and I would hope that the action that the mayor has taken in regards to this community, that everything is done in such a way that we get a real robust approach to what UP is doing, along with EPA. Because truth of the matter was, I think this should have been taken to a level that it should have been a suit file, a large suit file, because we talk about people that want to move, people that don't want to move. And this is not going to get resolved in the next few weeks. But Mayor, I want to applaud you for taking the action because you provided us with a lot more information in regards to this area, the even permitting of a single multi, and then discovering that it was a multifamily. All of these type of erroneous things are going on, and it sends a bad message to everybody. So my prayer is that the council, that all of us, would take all of this serious, because there's a lot more questions I'm sure there's going to be asked from the community, and I think they deserve the right to hear it. Whether they're going to sell their property, whether they're going to stay in the property, we should not take this lightly. This is a shotgun wound and not a Band-Aid wound.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Evan Shabazz?
Thank you. I want to commend my colleague, Councilmember Plummer, for her recommendation. But I'd like to kind of piggyback on that and see if there could also be a cap on the amount of money that will be needed for them to buy back. Because if they allow them to buy it back, and they give them a phenomenal cost, then they're going to be priced out. So just another recommendation to piggyback on Councilmember Plummer. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, very well. Councilmember Plummer?
Thank you, Mayor, and I just wanted to comment to you, Councilmember Davis. The federal government is well aware. So the Moonshot Program is a program that the federal government has focused on Houston and Flint, Michigan. And so it's, they're well aware of it. I was there about two weeks ago advocating for Houston. They're very engaged, is another nonprofit, the National Minority of Environment Quality in MFQ. They're also engaged, too. So this has gotten to DC. Yes, and they are well aware of what's going on, and the help is hopefully on the way. But to your point, you're right. I mean, the federal government's definitely engaged, and this is a nonprofit organization that funds environmental justice concerns around the country.
Thank you. I'm glad to hear that, because this is, this is, really, it tends to put a look on Houston. And we all love our city, and so we want to make sure that we show ourselves doing something, you know, proactive, then reactive. Thank you.
Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you. And I just wanted to comment on Councilmember Castillo. You asked a question about Denver Harbor. The EPA actually set up an advisory group, and Denver Harbor was part of this advisory group. The community actually picked who they wanted to represent on this particular board, and that way, the community, you know, is on the forefront, they get information in real time. And so just wanted to make sure that you knew that that was happening. And then also, the Health Department has a community advisory group as well, and so this is just to make sure that the community is getting the information that they need, and so, yeah, just wanted to make sure you know that.
Thank you. And the EPA emphasized to me that they'd be working with the advisory group that has been chosen by the community. So there's a lot of things going forward. Let me just say, Councilmember Thomas, we're all familiar with the ills, historical ills in America. I don't think we're going to fix them this morning, but if we can do our part, certainly in the city of Houston, restoring trust on this and other projects, and don't underestimate this mayor's ability to restore trust, a pretty long record of being in the community. So I hope you all appreciate this model. I would suggest that we need to do more of this. I don't think that you can just have a press conference, or everybody goes to Fifth Ward with the Secretary of the EPA and say, we're going to do something, and then pass something in the closing days that did not include a plan, which led to even more confusion and distrust. So with that said, I would like to move or accept a motion to take Item 15 out of order. And Stephen and Cynthia, thank you all for your outstanding work, and we got more work to do. So if I could get a motion to take 15 out of order, we'll go forward.
Mayor, a motion to take Item 15 out of order.
Evan Shabazz, so second.
Motion is made and seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Please call up Item 15.
Item 15 is in order, it just need a vote.
All in favor?
Oh, hold on. Councilor Pollard?
Councilmember Pollard?
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning to everyone. Glad to see that this item is back on the agenda after the 30 days. I want to thank you, Mayor, for your diligence. I want to thank the councilmember of this district for your consistent diligence and work on this, and everybody. It seems like the entire council has focused on this item and put a lot of effort and attention on it. At the end of the day, I think we just want to help people, right? And in government, it's hard to get money, and we have some. And when a lot of other entities are not stepping up to the plate, we are. And so I think the importance of this item is, one, just to make sure that we have money to do something. And there are going to be questions from the past that aren't answered, there are questions today that still aren't answered, but that's why you're elected, to figure it out. And we have to be able to continue to give that message and have presence in that community so those people who are dealing with this on a daily basis can have some comfort that whatever decision they make is in the best interest for themselves and their family. And so I think this item goes a long way towards doing that. If 30 days is needed for people to feel comfortable in doing so, I think that that's welcome. I want to thank those who have had the vision and courage to even put forth this type of item in the past that we can even discuss today. And I want to thank you all for your continued effort in looking at it. But I don't want this to be the last day that we put this, the type of attention on it, because the people of Fifth Ward that are inside that cancer cluster are going to depend on this type of attention in the days ahead. Thank you.
Well said, and the Fifth Ward residents and all the stakeholders need to know, we're not going anywhere. There are studies being conducted, and there's networking and accountability in play as we vote on this this morning. Thank you for your comments.
Just need a vote.
Need a vote. Secretary, all in?
Did you already call it? Okay, yeah, we just need a vote.
All in favor of Item 15? Aye? Nays? Ayes have it? Thank you, members.